Going to call to order the Town Board Regular Meeting for September 23rd, 2019. The time being 7:06 PM. Ms. Iker, will you please take roll call?
Mayor Kristi Melendez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bennet.
Here.
Miles Baker.
Here.
Barry Wilson.
Here.
Paul Rennermeyer.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
David Sislowski.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bennet, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance speaks to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is review of agenda by the Board and addition of items of new business to the agenda for consideration.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agendas presented this evening.
Second. Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second for Mr. Baker approving the agenda as presented. All in favor signify with yes, opposed no. And the agenda has been unanimously approved as presented. Moving on to item four, Board Liaison Reports. Town Board Member Baker, Tree Board and Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. I have no updates since our last meeting. However, tomorrow night is the Tree Board Evening Function. They're going to do a couple of seminars and you can meet the Tree Board at the Rex Center tomorrow.
Okay. Town Board Member Wilson, Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Board and Pooter River Trail Corridor.
No major updates for Parks, Recreation and Culture, although the summer activities are winding down. The Pooter River Trail Corridor had their major event and fundraiser last week, which was the Party on the Pooter, which was a great success. Thanks everyone who supported that.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Bennet, Water and Sewer Board.
Water and Sewer Board met on September 11th. I was not present, but looking at their notes, they had a discussion and reviewed information regarding the single-family dual-system raw water dedication and also information and discussion regarding the MS4 permit process and fee.
Okay. Town Board Member Rennermeyer, Chamber of Commerce.
I have no update. There has not been a regular Chamber of Commerce monthly board meeting since our last convened Town Board meeting.
Town Board Member Jones, Windsor Housing Authority and Great Western Trail Authority.
Great Western Trail Authority will have the regular meeting next week. Windsor Housing Authority met last week. They are going to be submitting their letter of intent to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for the Golden Meadows Project. They are particularly interested in whether the town is going to be receptive to waiving certain fees that we had, mainly tap fees and building inspection fees as we have in the past for this particular project. We have a scheduled work session October 21st to talk about Housing Authority issues and I'm certain that members of their Board are going to be at that particularly meeting, that meeting as scheduled and probably that will come up in the discussion. They have also are advertising for a full-time maintenance person to take the place of coordinating all the maintenance that needs to be done at Century 3. One of the Board members, Phil Vocley, you may recall, was pretty much overseeing that pro bono and so they are, they're going to advertise for that person to come on board, probably be the first of the year. And that's all I have.
Town Board Members Sislowski, Clearview Library Board and Planning Commission.
Mayor and audience, the Library Board, I don't have anything to report. New the Library Board will be meeting this coming Thursday at 5:30 at the library itself. If anyone wants to attend, that meeting is open to the public. And the, I did miss the Planning Commission last week, so nothing to report there, though we have obviously some issues on our agenda tonight.
And I have Downtown Development Authority, so I don't have anything to report there. We didn't have a meeting last week because in lieu of that, we did meet last Tuesday and did strategic planning for 2020. So we had a really good, in-depth, long discussion about what the Downtown Development Authority is going to be looking at and focusing on in terms of developments, in terms of what they're going to be working with, with valuable businesses downtown, what kinds of events and things they're going to be doing. And so as Matt takes all of that information that we spent together in three hours, I'm sure he'll roll that out and that will be a public document that everybody can take a look at. But I think, I think they're on a very good track to do, continue to do some really good things and that should be coming out shortly. And I don't have a future report from the North Front Range MPO since my last report, but our next meeting is going to be on October 3rd at 5:30 in Loveland. So our fifth item is public invited to be heard. This is for individuals wishing to participate and to be heard on a non-agenda item. When I call you, come up to the podium, speak your name and address for the record and then you will be given three minutes to chat with us about whatever topic it is you want to talk to us this evening. And it looks like we have one party this evening who wanted to come before us, Joe DeWes.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me. I am Joe DeWes. I live at 6121 Southern Hills Drive in Windsor. I've been a resident of Windsor since 2005 and I've been a motor homer since the year 2000 when I retired. I'm coming to you this evening to seek a change in the current parking municipal code for vehicles over 22-foot in length. My motor home happens to be that large and I think a large number of motor homes are that large. The issue becomes, the limitation that currently exists says you can no, you cannot park your motor home on the street for anything longer than 24 hours continuous. Like I said, I've been motor homing for nearly 20 years and we typically don't use our motor home like a lot of people might in terms of weekends and short trips. We typically take a trip, like we just got back last week after being gone for six weeks, lived in the motor home the entire time. And that's fairly typical. We'll take trips anywhere from two to three weeks up to three months in the wintertime. In order to be able to do that, your motor ham, motor home becomes your home on wheels and so you have to basically deal with, with the machine much like you would your car and your home combined, because that's indeed what you're doing. You're rolling down the road with your house. And so it has built into it all the infrastructure you would expect in a motor home as well as in a home. In a motor home, you have all of the responsibilities, all of the features that you need in order to reliably travel and be able to set up and use it as a home when you get to where you're going. And that includes like leveling systems and connections to all of the utilities you'd expect like water and wastewater and electricity, cell service, other things. In preparing for a trip, I have to, and my wife, we both have to do two major jobs. One is prepare the vehicle for the travel and number two is prepare ourselves for living in this vehicle full-time for a long period of time. So getting ready for a trip, you have to check it. It's a fairly complex machine. In our, in my case, I have a diesel pusher and it has to be dealt with. And then when you get to where you're going, you've got all of the features of a home that you have to do, like your clothing, your personal care items and all your electronics. So the 24-hour limit to be able to do all this is a little bit restrictive. It's basically untenable. So I'm requesting if possible to extend that time to 48 or 72 hours. In reference, the City of Loveland has current municipal code of 72 hours and Fort Collins is 48 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, our consent calendar. Consent calendar this evening consists of two items, minutes of the September 9th Regular Meeting and Resolution 2019-63.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, a motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer and a second for Mr. Baker approving the consent calendar as presented. All in favor signify with yes, opposed no. And the consent calendar is approved unanimously. Moving on to item C, Board Action. First item this evening is a public hearing for Resolution Number 2019-64. Water Valley South Subdivision 27th filing, Brian Williamson, TST, the applicant's representative. Quasi judicial action. Looks like Mr. Ballstad's going to give presentation and I would seek a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second for Mr. Wilson to open public hearing. All in favor vote yes, opposed no. Public hearing is now opened. Mr. Ballstad.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Board. This is a final major subdivision, Water Valley South Subdivision 27th filing, also known as Pelican Shores. Subdivision's being reviewed in accordance with Article 4 of Chapter 17 of the Unmissable Code that outlines the purpose of the major subdivision process. The site is located on the east side of 7th Street, just north of the new Liberty Road Roundabout in 7th Street. The site is zoned residential mixed-use and is surrounded by other residential uses. Water Valley South Master Plan originally proposed up to 226 dwelling units on roughly less than 20 acres. However, the current plat before you is only for 71 lots, so it's a much less dense project than what was allowed by, would be allowed by the Master Plan and includes a lot more open space, including a clubhouse lot and a 7.84 acre common area tract for landscaping, open space and other uses. This is the landscape plan with north oriented to the right-hand side of this drawing, 7th Street along the top of the drawing. Application is consistent with the growth framework and the residential areas framework of the comprehensive plan, maintaining the character of the community while accommodating future growth that is fiscally and environmentally responsible, supporting diverse housing stock as well. This depicts the notification area that was, the people within the area were notified of the neighborhood meeting that was held on March 27th. Additionally, the notice of tonight's public hearing and the Planning Commission's public hearing were published in the newspaper, the website, bulletin board and sign was posted on the property. At their September 18th Regular Meeting, the Planning Commission forwarded to the Town Board a recommendation of approval of the final major subdivision as presented, subject to all remaining Planning Commission and staff comments being addressed and the development agreement being executed. And that's my presentation for the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ballstad? Mr. Jones?
I think the letter for the application said there's one and two-story units.
I believe it's a mix and the applicant is present and he'll be able to provide a little bit more detail on the actual product type.
Okay.
Are they going to have direct access to the roundabout or they will be off New Liberty?
No, they're, well, they have direct access to the previously existing roundabout that's actually east of 7th Street, so not the new roundabout, but the old roundabout.
And there's also, there's also free access?
There's access on the 7th Street and there's access to the old.
Yeah, 7th and.
Yeah.
Are these, are these for sale or for lease?
I believe they're for sale. So yeah, in this depiction, you can see 7th Street along the top of the drawing. That's a restricted movement access on the 7th Street and then to the south or the left is the Water Valley South Roundabout that is accessing. And the town's, the town's new roundabout is up here.
Any other questions? Mr. Sislowski?
Just real quick, Mr. Ballstad, so on the subdivision considerations, I'm guessing obviously your department feels it complies with all nine items on the list. I am curious because someone brought up the street design access. Number six talks about construction standard access, et cetera. And you're all comfortable with the way this is laid out?
Yes. Yes, and we've actually had our on-call transportation planning consultant review the access point on 7th Street to make sure that the geometry is how we, the best it can be. So we've had outside review as well.
Thank you.
And did the applicant want to say anything? Do you want to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a very brief presentation to make. My name's Brian Williamson with TST Consulting Engineers and we are the engineers and planners for the project. This is the Pelican Shores Water Valley 27th filing, major subdivision, public hearing, as you all know. Here's a rendering of that project, I think that maybe shows the new roundabout up there in the top corner and then the existing roundabout right below that and then the three-quarter access that's coming off of Paddleboard Drive, which is coming out onto 7th there. Just like Scott went over there, I'm not going to rehash all of his statistics for you, but we do want to say it's 46% open space on this project. It's a slightly different look and feel than a normal subdivision because they're building pads, excuse me, with access drives leading up to them. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. As you can see in the open space breakdown, some of that, about 11%, does go into the driveways, but then the remainder, remaining seven acres is common open space usable by all the residents. We did want to show this lot comparison table. What that does is it kind of shows what your typical single-family 600, 6,000 square foot lot would look like compared to the average 41, 41 square foot building envelopes that we're proposing. It shows that the densities are the same, really just the lot coverage is less in this scenario. So that's really just made up because you don't have the, all that space going from your building envelope out to the right-of-way, taking that change and then your backyard as well is all in that kind of common maintained area. We do have a couple of floor plans. There's two lot sizes here. There's a large lots that front on the lake and then smaller interior lots. These are the floor plans for the small lots. Now there's a variety of floor plans that are being developed. This is just an example of one, but it does show that the garage coming in and the entry with an office in the front, master bedroom on the first floor with a large dining and living area with a patio outside. And then the second floor shows an additional bedroom and then a media room. All the way on the left shows how that fits into the building envelope. We have allowed quite a bit of space between the building envelopes. So there, this is a 30, I'm sorry, a 40-foot product and we've made the building envelopes 44 feet apart, so giving two extra feet on either side and then eight feet in between those lots. What we're trying to make sure is we have 10 feet of building separation there. So we've got two feet on either side there to kind of push and pull that envelope in case anything gets staked incorrectly or there's an extra little bump out in the windows or anything like that. Just to make sure we had some, a little bit of flexible space there. These are some elevations on the small lots. Again, they're conceptual, but you can see the kind of character that they're going for here. And then we have a floor plan for those large lots. Those large lots focus are triangular at the end, so they have a side loading garage and then the entry is a little bit tucked in there. Same master bedroom in the back facing the lake, outdoor access there. Same second bedroom available on the, on the second story there with the media room. I think there'll be a couple of different configurations, possibly having a few more bedrooms in these as well. And then again, all the way on the left, you can see how that fits with that diagonal front lot line. These are some elevations of the larger lots. You can see there's the covered patio in the back that will be looking directly out over the lake. Again, we're here to, Justin Dunhu is here. He'll be the builder and developer on the project, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any additional questions from the Board on this presentation? Dr. Jones?
You have one and two-story or where are they, how many of each and where are the two-story located?
So the, there will be, you'll kind of buy a lot and then pick a plan to go on the lot, so it's not predetermined where there'll be one-story and two-story, but there are both one-story, like a ranch product and then a two-story product being offered in the plans. So it's not, we couldn't say for specifically, specifically which lots are available for ranches or two-story. I think either mode would be available on any lot.
Any additional questions? Okay. This is the public hearing segment, so this would be the time and opportunity, if anybody wanted to come before the Board, now would be the time on this particular topic. Seeing none, would there be a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second for Mayor Pro Tem Bennet to close public hearing. All in favor vote yes, opposed no. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to item two, Resolution Number 2019-64. Water Valley South Subdivision 27th filing, Brian Williamson, TST, the applicant's representative. Quasi judicial action. Mr. Ballstad, anything further?
Just that staff requests that the following be entered into the record, the application of supplemental materials, the staff memo and supporting documents and the staff recommend, and the recommendation from Planning Commission.
Are there any additional questions from the Board? Do we need to take any public, we don't need to ask because we just did that. So then I would seek a motion on this resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2019-64.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second from Mr. Wilson approving Resolution 2019-64. All in favor vote yes, opposed no. And the resolution passes unanimously. Moving on to item three, Ordinance Number 2019-1592. An ordinance of the Town Board of the Town of Windsor, Colorado approving the service plan for the future Ledgeons Sports Park Metropolitan Districts, numbers one through two, and authorizing the execution of a near-governmental agreement between the town and the districts. This is second reading and legislative action. Mr. McCarter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's before you tonight is identical to what you saw during the public hearing held a couple of weeks ago. The, most of the question and answer two weeks ago had to do with the financing plan and Mr. Ankle was here to explain that and Ms. Steffel was here to further provide you with counsel on the statutory elements that are set forth in the ordinance. Approval tonight on second reading would adopt this ordinance finally and would allow the districts to then go to district court and actually get the court orders they need to actually form and operate the district. Given that this is second reading, public comment is required and also five votes is required for passage.
Are there any questions for Mr. McCarter?
I did, if I can find it. Okay. If I wasn't here last time, I had a question about the cap on the mills.
Yes.
I was a little confused. I think it said 34, if I can find my notes here, on the capital, 39 on operation.
Correct.
So total 63, 73?
Total is 39.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Both of those caps fit within our code-based cap of 39.
I was just confused when I read the note. Okay, thank you.
And once, from the time of adoption, if this should be adopted tonight, what's, what's the timeframe in the court process before it would be? I mean, how long does that normally take?
You know, I can probably get a really good answer to that from Mr. White. Zach White is here. So let me ask Zachary to step forward.
My name's Zachary White with the Law Firm, White, Bar &amp; Ankle, Tanaka &amp; Waldron and Centennial and we represent the developer, the proponents of the district. If this ordinance is adopted tonight, we will file a petition with the district court asking for a hearing to call the organizational election. That election would be held on November 5th and then within 14 days following that election, the results would be certified by a canvas board and then filed again with the district court indicating the results of that election. If the, if the results pass, the electors vote in favor of the district. Being organized, we'd ask the district court to enter an order declaring the districts organized. Once we receive that order, we get a certified copy and record that. Once it's recorded, then the districts exist. Typically here in, in Weld County, the court moves pretty quickly. So within a couple of days of filing for an order and decree declaring the districts organized, I'd anticipate receiving that. So probably end of November, early December is when the districts would come to organization and then we'd probably hold our first meeting in early January.
So it is possible maybe to complete this process in 2019?
It is possible. Yep.
I have nothing further to add. Thank you, Zachary.
Any additional questions or questions from the Board? Okay, if not, this is second reading. Is there anybody who wish to address the Board on this agenda item? This would be the time to come forward. Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor to adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1592?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2019-1592.
Second.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second from Dr. Jones approving Ordinance 2019-1592. All in favor vote yes, opposed no. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, Ordinance Number 2019-1593. An ordinance raising the height limit of accessory structures exempt from building permits by repealing, amending and replacing Windsor Municipal Code Sections 16-8-30 subsection D and 18-2-10 International Building Code Sections 105.2. Again, second reading and legislative action. Mr. Ballstad.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Board. The subject ordinance corrects an oversight that staff had intended to address with the adoption of the 28 building, 2018 building codes that occurred earlier this summer. Currently, the height of an accessory structure is limited to eight feet in order to not require a building permit. However, a lot of stock prefab accessory structures are at a height of nine or 10 feet tall and there's really no need for a building permit for that size structure. So this ordinance will increase the height of an accessory structure from eight feet to 10 feet and 120 square feet to be allowed to be erected without a building permit. And this is second reading and stat, and no changes have been made since the first reading.
Are there any questions on Mr. Ballstad on this item? Seeing none, again, this is second reading. If there's anybody who wish to address the Board on this agenda item, this would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, you've got everything you need for the record?
Yep.
Okay, I would seek a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2019-1593.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2019-1593.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Mr. Motion on the floor from Mr. Mayor Pro Tim Bennett, and a second from Barry Wilson approving ordinance 2019 dash fifteen ninety-three. All in favor, vote yes. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Moving on to item five, ordinance number 2019 dash fifteen ninety-four. An ordinance correcting Article Three, Chapter Eighteen, International Residential Code by repealing, amending, and replacing Section R three one three Automatic Fire Sprinkler Systems. Second reading, legislative action. Mr. Bolstead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Board. This ordinance is also a correction to an oversight in the ordinance adopting the two thousand and eighteen building codes. Town Board had given staff the direction to exempt single-family homes and duplexes from the fire sprinkler provision or requirement, and unfortunately, the ordinance was not, did not accurately reflect that direction, so this will correct that to exempt single-family homes and duplexes from requiring sprinklers. No changes have been made since the first reading.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Bolstead on this item? Okay. Seeing none, this is second reading, so this would be the time for anybody who wish to address the board on this agenda item, now would be the time to step forward. Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 2019 dash fifteen ninety-four.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Mr. Rennermeyer with a second from Mr. Baker approving ordinance number 2019 dash fifteen ninety-four. All in favor, vote yes. And the ordinance passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, ordinance number 2019 dash fifteen ninety-five. An ordinance amending Chapter Two and Chapter Sixteen of the Windsor Municipal Code with respect to the removal of members of certain boards and commissions serving the Town of Windsor. This is first reading and legislative action. Mr. McCarter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's before you tonight is rather a cleanup ordinance that was requested in the context of some changes we made to board and commission membership about a month ago. And in that effort, we discovered that some of the language for the removal of board and commission members was a bit awkward, and so what we did in the early ordinance was make it clear, and then at your request, this ordinance also brings that same language into the removal of planning commission members and board of adjustment members, which are really the only two remaining boards and commissions that would be subject to this kind of requirement. So this is before you on first reading. I don't have anything other, other to say than this is something you requested, and I agree that it, it brings consistency to the code.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. McCarter? Dr. Jones?
Yeah, and it looks like parentheses C and parentheses E in the ordinance are the same, say the same thing. I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it says, "Members of the planning commission may be removed from office for inefficiency, neglect of duty," and E says the same thing. And there's no mention that planning commission members have to be residents. I assume they do.
Okay. So hang on, let me get caught up with you on this, Dr. Jones.
Page one thirty of the packet. Mr. McCarter, yeah, we'll be looking at that.
Yeah, let me get that to something.
The language is a bit different in the second sentence.
Yeah, that's where the difference is.
Sorry, there.
Let me see if I can find that. Stand by here.
You're fine.
So we're talking about section?
C. C and E.
C and E under section two.
They both start, the first sentence is the same in both. It's the second sentence that.
Correct. I don't know how that happened. What I intended is that what appears in as subsection C would be subs, that the language in subsection E would be substituted for subsection C. And so that's just a drafting oversight on my part. Tell you what, I would ask that you postpone this to October fourteenth. There is no urgency to this, and I will correct this when it comes back before you. May we have a motion to postpone?
Madam Mayor, I move that this item be postponed until October?
Fourteenth.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Mr. Sizlowski, and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Bennett to postpone this ordinance until October fifteenth.
Fourteenth.
October fourteenth.
Concerning the residency.
That may be.
It'll be plugged into C, correct?
That may be elsewhere in other sections of the code. I will check on that too before the fourteenth, Dr. Jones.
Okay, but yeah, it does mention it on board of adjustment, but not planning.
Okay. I'll find that and answer that question. If you're comfortable with waiting until the fourteenth, I can cover it then. Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions, Mr. McCarter? If not, we do have a motion on the floor, so all in favor for postpone it, vote yes. Oppose, no. And we will postpone. It passes unanimously.
Thank you, your attorney.
Moving on to item seven, we're going to have this evening a retail strategic, strategic plan update from Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Board members. Tonight, I have Katie Press here with KP Consultants and Associates. She's here to talk about the third phase of our retail standard, retail strategy. As you know, we have been working on this for a few years, had some slight delays just because of the retail market. We didn't know what we did. So we've gone through three different identifying sessions. Once we hired that big retail strategy company to, to figure out what our leakage was, and then Katie delved down, got us connected into and identified those areas a little bit more. This takes it a step further, where we actually are including planning and engineering in this group as well, and we're trying to identify now six areas, and this is, you're going to see the newest area tonight, which is the sports park we've added, really trying to identify, what do we want those areas to look for, and how can we, as a town, help to interpret those areas a little bit better to make sure that we attract the kind of retail that we want in that part of town? So we had those five additional areas, and then we shifted gears to the sports park when they moved in this last year and, and located at Diamond Valley. So we thought the urgency was to kind of shift towards that particular area because they were coming online so quickly to see if there were things that we could do to help attract again and identify that area to have its own unique retail center. So we had first tried to tie it into East Point at two fifty-seven and three ninety-two and connect to the downtown. It just doesn't connect. So this area that we're talking about tonight, that Katie will give the report on the first area that we've done, and we held stakeholder meetings and worked with planning and engineering, is on the sports park, Great Western Industrial Park. So that synergy between those two right off of Eastman. So I will invite Katie up to give her presentation, and then we'll both be available for questions.
So how do I change this? Everybody, everybody was all like hitting all the buttons, and I'm like, I don't know where those are. Okay, great, thanks. Good evening. I'm Katie Press with KP and Consulting. I think most of you know who I am. I am a retail consultant who has been in the industry for, oh gosh, over thirty-five years now. It keeps going up. So as Stacy alluded to, you know, when we, we took the work that Rickard Cunningham started and have been refining it and refining it, and now we're really trying to delve down into more of an implementation phase. We originally did not study this area. This area was an industrial and is an industrial area, but the movement of the sports complex over to Eastman Drive is really a catalytic change, so much so that we felt that it warranted review from a retailing perspective. So I'll walk through kind of the process that we did and the goals that we had. In general, and this is true, and, and you're going to see presentations on each of the areas that we study, this is just the first. Our goals for each of the areas that we look at is that, you know, retail's trending in a really dramatic new direction and causing significant disruptions. That's probably the nicest way I can say it. And given those factors, and with that retail shift, we really felt like the, the town needed to shift their retailing expectations at the same time for the key target areas of the town. This is no longer, you know, creating a list of retailers and, and making phone calls and looking at, at, you know, traditional recruitment philosophies as it pertains to retailing. Given where retailing is at and where retailers are at, that's, that's pretty much a, an emphasis that doesn't bear very much fruit. We're also finding too, and even the work that we did with Rickard Cunningham is interesting because, you know, it, data, when given just in its purest form, when it pertains to retailing, is assuming a predictive customer. That, and it assumes that you shop and, and you shop for goods in the same manner, in the same place, so with the same frequency. And as we know now with the disruptions in retailing, that's actually not true. We don't buy the same thing from the same place with the same frequency, and that makes data not the useful tool that it perhaps was. So even some of that, that stuff that we've done a few years ago has started to become outdated. So the work that we're doing now is actually much more relevant and much more hands-on as it pertains to each of these areas. So we're, we're really looking at this new perspective to provide the groundwork and vision necessary from a next generational aspect of retail to be represented in Windsor. Working from that forward-thinking perspective, we've created a process, and we've tried to make that an inclusive process. Our goals are to create a comprehensive process to review retailing, which is what we're doing, provide specific development focus and detail for those retailing areas, align the city's vision with retail market realities. That's a really important component. We need to all be on the same page in this environment to do the kind of work that we need to do. And ultimately, it's to guide economic development efforts in retailing so that we are providing the, the level of support to the private sector as well as to economic development so that we're working in tandem with each other. So we've created a working team, and that working team includes Stacy, Jill Young, who works with Stacy in economic development, Desa Blair out of engineering. Infrastructure is a really big component as we look at some of these areas. It can either be a hindrance or a help, or identifies areas that we need to provide opportunity in. Scott got roped in. He didn't, we didn't start with Scott, but Scott, Scott had to jump in in the middle and, and really pick up the reins from the planning perspective. Rich Werner with Upstate Colorado, and then myself. And some of you have participated in our stakeholders, so you got to see our team working together in that capacity. So the question we really put to the table was, what is the retailing impact to this area based on the sports park coming in? And that's a really interesting question because it's a really unusual use. And so, and to be honest with you, I had to be swayed a little bit. I had to be educated in, about what, you know, a sports complex could potentially bring to the area. And the more you delve into it, the more you start to understand that these are very unique, high participant, high visitor type count complexes, and they really present an interesting opportunity, I think, from a retailing perspective. So this analysis that we did looked at the specific opportunity for additional retail and discussion of how to manifest that opportunity. One of the first things we wanted to do was really understand from the stakeholder perspective what they thought. And that, that stakeholder list included elected officials, it included staff, and then it included property owners in the area, which was a really interesting, I think, conversation for us to have because we met with, we met with the gentleman that owns the shopping center at two fifty-seven and three ninety-two. We met with folks that own businesses within the industrial park, and then we also met with, obviously, the sports with Jeff. We met with Jeff, and then we met with Great Western or GWIP Industrial Park. And it was really interesting to hear kind of the excitement that they have about this change in the perspective out there. And our questions were really centered on what area would or could change based on this catalytic nature of the sports park. Common threads, you know, we had lots of comments, but there were some common threads amongst everybody, you know? So in general, the news of the sports park is great for the overall community in the area. There's excitement about that. This is the big entree into tourism, destination area, something that the town hasn't had before, and really helps to establish perhaps a different aspect to the town than what we've, what has been presented so to date. There are limited services in the area. I don't think that surprised anybody to hear that. It just doesn't take too much to understand that that's pretty limited out there. Interesting, when we talked to the business owners in the area, they don't really have any place to go for lunch. They don't really have services in that area. They're pretty self, a matter of one gentleman gave us an elaborate discussion about how they're trying to provide food on-site because their employees have such a lack of opportunity. They really felt most workers leave the area on a daily basis to go get food. Limited, I could say in some cases, none. Pedestrian connectivity, no ability to really walk in the area. Even if there were options on the periphery of the industrial area, it would be tough to get there on foot. Most are hoping that the area becomes more dynamic for entertainment uses outside of the sports complex. I mean, there's, I think there's a general excitement and understand that it is the nucleus of what we're talking about, but they're hoping that that manifests itself in a way that more entertainment things come into play. Direction on ancillary development surrounding the sports park is needed, meaning there needs to be some, there needs to be some more detailed direction than, you know, just kind of saying, hey, we think things are going to change. The connection to downtown is important. I think everybody that we talk to, without exception, and a couple of property owners are really adamant about it, they really feel that the connection to downtown is very important. The question is whether it's feasible. And that, that was brought up by a number of individuals of saying, you know, we want, we want it, we see it, we think it has validity, but is it feasible? DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, may not be as active in the sports complex downtown discussion as they should be, and that was kind of born out of extrapolating the conversation about downtown and its relationship to the sports park. Activation of the lake, how can the lake be activated to enhance the use of visitors to the downtown area? And then more than, several individuals made the comment that there may not be enough attractions downtown to pull visitors into it. So it was an interesting conversation. It went in some directions I don't think that we necessarily anticipated, but that's why you do stakeholders, because you, you know, you find some threads that make you look at, at how you, how you move forward and what your recommendations should be. So when we look at, I call this the issues part, and that's what you'll see in the analysis. You know, this is an industrial area, and it was developed as such. It looks, feels, and acts like an industrial area. There's, there's no sugar coat in it, there's no, there's no other way but to say this is an industrial area. You know, the development factors that are associated with destination sporting, entertainment, and retail, retail development are certainly not present and would not expect to be present given the fact that this is an industrial area. You know, the real issue is how do you bridge the built environment of an industrial area with the dynamic elements needed for the area to realize its potential as a destination multi-use complex? And I give you this because one of these things is not like the others. And that is very much the case with this particular area. And I, I would tell you, of all the things that we're going to talk about, this is the, this is the biggest factor. I know, I love this picture. So, you know, the, if we take, you know, the issue of it being industrial, and we'll get into that a little bit more here, but, you know, really the specific issues are, you know, the sport, one of the things that I think that makes it also challenging is that the sports complex is located off a major intersection. It's not visible to the larger area. It's down the road. And, you know, the sports complex alone will not provide or generate transition of the broader area. It is the catalyst, but if it were to be the only thing that came in, you would prob, more than likely start to see something unique sitting in the middle of an industrial area, and we wouldn't see the transition that, that we would need to have or expect to have, to have a deeper or more interesting retailing environment for this area. Supporting hospitality, entertainment, and retail development is going to be needed. Those, those factors are going to be pretty important. Connectivity to non- Connectivity to non-existent, nonexistent within the connectivity is nonexistent within the immediate and broader area. So this doesn't really connect to anything. It's, it's pretty islanded out there. I mean, you, you're on the edge, in some cases, you're on the, you know, on the, of the outskirts of town. We're not in the middle of town and we're not connected from multiple areas into this area. And the visual presentation along Eastman Drive and the surrounding area is industrial only. You know, we're not presenting ourself as that destination-oriented type of, you know, entertainment, sporting, and, and, you know, tourism type of area. Where I think things have a chance to help is Great Western Industrial Park. Interestingly enough, I mean, they, they provided a pretty interesting interview with us and they, they have some pretty aggressive plans, I think, and ideas for their particular corner. What's interesting to me, and I know Jeff and I got into a pretty debated conversation about this, but I'm still going to put my retail hat on the table versus his. These guys actually have the better site for retail. Maybe not for the sporting complex, maybe not for the hospitality associated with the activity, but when you look at potentially the hospitality component and the retailing component, they have the better site. They have direct visibility and accessibility to the primary intersection. You can see them. You don't have to make a turn down Eastman to find it. You can drive 257 and you're going to see them. In my mind, arguably, that's the best site within the trade area for retailing. And I really think that as things start to manifest themselves and really start to become visible out there, these guys are going to get some interesting traction in the retailing arena. Add to that, they have sufficient land to, to add entertainment, so they don't, you know, they've got more than enough land. They could add additional sporting venues, they can add entertainment components to it, hospitality, and all of those things will complement what the retailing wants to do in that area. And it's just, this is where Jeff believes that holding them on-site is going to be key, and I don't think it's going to be nearly as key as he thinks it is given the proximity of Great Western Industrial Park. The other thing that Great Western Industrial Park has the opportunity to do is really start to change the face of, of Eastman Drive. Where we need to really focus on changing what is an industrial area, they have the opportunity to take a really high-profile piece of dirt at the high-profile intersection and really bring those, start to bring those elements into the area that is going to expand the conversation for the area. Downtown Windsor. So, it's, it's indirect. I don't think any, that's not a surprise to anybody that's, that we're talking to about this. It has, it's, it does not have any natural links between that area and the downtown. There's a lack of depth of entertainment users within the downtown to attract the visitors. Now, that's today, that doesn't mean that over time that isn't going to change. And there's no easy formula. The team spent a considerable amount of time talking about this. There's no easy, well, we should just do this and we'll do this and then we will be linked and all things will be good. So there's no formula on how to link the areas together. It's, it's really a roll-your-sleeves-up conversation and to talk about what the options could be. And also, in some ways, much as we're looking at Eastman Drive and 257, downtown has to be evaluated on its own to really understand how it could provide that kind of, you know, link to the sports park for visitors and people who are coming. And then we'll get into this in next steps. So, Eastman Park Drive. So the character of Eastman Park Drive must evolve. It's got to change. It can't be a state industrial street. It has to move to something that's much more dynamic and it's got to start right at the intersection of 257 and Eastman. It needs to signal to visitors and residents that they are entering a new environment. And, and that's a really important component. And it's something that the town is going to have to take responsibility for, both in terms of leadership of how, making it happen and directing what those improvements are going to be. Again, those emphasis must start at the primary intersection at Highway 257 and carry through the sports complex, so it's got to come all the way down to the sports complex. Elements of architectural character, streetscape and branding need to be evaluated within the, within a corridor plan, along with traffic and functional elements currently required by Eastman Park Drive. So as much as we don't want that to still be industrial, it's still going to act in some capacity as industrial, at least from 257 to, to the sports complex. We've got to figure out where the access points are, also as well into Great Western Industrial Park and how we're, how we can translate and, and use traffic in that area together in such a way that they're not detrimental. And, you know, the sports park brings an interesting challenge in that regard because they have, they have events, you know, so you have a lot of people coming in and then a lot of people coming out. It's not this kind of continual flow that you might see in a traditional retailing or perhaps even a, you know, any type of area. It's going to provide, it's going to present some interesting traffic conversation in terms of how all those things are handled, as well as the fact that you've got truck traffic moving up and down Eastman. Great Western Industrial Park must play a significant role in helping to establish the character of Eastman Park Drive. They are a huge player in this conversation. If they were to come in and start to do industrial there and we were going to be intensifying the industrial component there on their site, that would be extremely detrimental to this, to the sports park really being the catalytic use that we're hoping it's going to be. Their development could provide the initiation of the necessary streetscape elements and then directing and reviewing their development plans will be made easier with a corridor plan in place. So, you know, one of the recommendations you have in my analysis, and, and I think Scott, Scott's already got this in the works for planning, is a corridor study for Eastman Park Drive. And that's really to get into the nitty-gritty and understand a lot of these elements that we're talking about. And then trying to figure out what transitional elements can we bring to this particular intersection and streetway so that we're really identifying it as something that is not industrial? You know, given the transitional challenges, you know, and that expanded corridor study is really the appropriate, appropriate vehicle to review all of these elements. And, and I would tell you that's a mandatory thing that we need to do. Much of those improvements, we either are going to want to be required and in some cases required in review of the sports complex. They have frontage on Eastman as well as Great Western. You know, the challenge becomes across the street on the, on the north side where we don't have active development to precipitate the changes and we have to look from the town's perspective, what things can we do? Are we going to do sidewalks? Are we going to do enhanced landscaping? How are we going to brand and identify this area something other than industrial? Connectivity planning. So this is where the whole conversation, I think, with downtown really comes into play. So the opportunity for connectivity and mobility between Diamond Valley and the surrounding areas, and specifically the downtown, is a priority. I think it's a priority for everybody. Everybody sees that that's something that, that should try to happen by both private and public stakeholders. With issues like railroad tracks, disconnected roads, physical barriers, missing sidewalks, lack of bike lanes, the opportunity is not without complexity. And so, a comprehensive look at the viability of making these connections is necessary. And it really can serve as a significant building block towards developing an environment attractive to visitors. And so, whether the connectivity planning is part of the corridor study, you know, to me, the corridor plan really just looks at Eastman Park Drive and the intersection. The connectivity planning really takes into consideration things well outside of that intersection. So it almost to me feels like a separate initiative. And that's kind of consistent, it is consistent with what we as the team had talked about. So in summary, you know, the analysis was initiated to evaluate retailing opportunities associated with Diamond Valley and the sports park. In my mind, there's no doubt that retailing can exist in an area that it had no interest in being in before, I should say that, without the sports complex. You know, I know Great Western had plans prior to the sports complex that included some retailing. I really think it would have been convenience in nature at best and it would have been right up on 257 and it really wouldn't have had any kind of real interest, I think is probably the best way to put it. It would have been opportunistic type of retailing. The sports complex provides an opportunity to really change the narrative in this area from a retailing perspective and really introduce retailing into an area that it has not had interest in being in before. It's a traffic generator, the sports complex is, and is non-traditional anchor for retailing. So, you know, sometimes that becomes an interesting question, but, you know, frankly, retail's gravitating to a more experiential type of opportunity. So I do think that the, the short answer is probably, and I think probably, more so than probably, it probably is yes. Some of this though, is going to depend on timing. So, you know, although non-traditional, the traffic counts being projected by the sports complex are certainly in the range to support restaurant and entertainment types of retailing. I know Great Western has talked a little bit about a grocery store. I don't think a grocery store is coming to 257 and Eastman. I think everything that's going to get focused in that area is going to be primarily focused towards that entertainment and sporting complex type of use. Southeast corner of 257 and Eastman Drive, the GWIP site is positioned to garner retail interest, interest outside and not specific to the sports complex, so I think that presents an interesting opportunity for them. Their site is better, has better visibility and exposure to the broader trade area, so it's in closer proximity to the sport, it's in close enough proximity to the sports clock, sports park, making it more of a bullseye site for retailing, so it kind of gets the best of both worlds, as we talked about already. It's more accessible to the residents and then it's also within close enough proximity to folks visiting the sports complex to have, to be able to benefit from it. Sorry, I shouldn't, should, I can't read the one, that's, I'm getting too old. And the last one is, you know, competitive perspective between the two developments which results in the two not recognizing the value with each other. I think there's a little bit of competitiveness going on right now, there's kind of like, my site's better. They actually need to work together. Each will make the other stronger. And so I don't know that from the town's perspective, that competition, that competitive spirit is not necessarily beneficial to the overall area. In all honesty, both of those sites are enhanced by each of them being successful and so we shouldn't be favoring one over the other. We should be working to get both of those guys to be as successful as possible. The town of Windsor's going to need to keep focused on how the retail manifests itself. You've got to start including, Scott and I got into some kind of interesting conversations and I don't, I'll let Scott address that maybe perhaps separately, but I, you know, I don't know that we have the land development code language in place to demand it, but we need to see place-making, streetscape, and landscaping elements dynamic enough to offset traditional industrial development pattern. If you think about, if we're out here on 392 and we're in the middle of the retailing area and retail comes in and they want to do a standard development plan, that's one thing. We actually need them to go above and beyond in this area to help offset the type of area that they're trying to enter into. So, you know, currently in industrial area, the area must transform away from that perspective to be fully successful. If we don't transform, retailers are not going to respond positively to this area. I've been one way too long to know what it's like to get in the car and try and drive your, your decision-makers to an industrial area and they're going to look at you like you lost your mind. So we have to have, even if those improvements aren't in place and they're not happening yet, we have to have, we have to show that we're committed to it and that we have a plan for redevelopment of that area to support these kinds of other users. The real transformation starts at Highway 257. That intersection is key. You can't ignore that intersection. It's the introduction, it's the way you come in and it has to, it has to grab you from a consumer and customer perspective from day one. For retailing to show up and be successful, the town must engage in, oh gosh, I'm, I'm so bad at this, I'm sorry.
Efforts to complete.
Thank you. Efforts to complete that transformation. So, you know, in typical development arenas, we wait for the, we wait for the developers to come along and do this, right? We, we don't necessarily take the ownership for this. Because of what this is and what we're trying to accomplish and the speed of which some of these things are going to come into fruition, I feel strongly that the town has to become more active than they might be traditionally within the town in terms of a development opportunity. The success of that initiative will dictate the quality and the type of retailing that looks to locate here. So if we don't want just a gas station, you know, we want something that has more depth and interest than that, we, we're going to be an integral partner in how that happens in this intersection. And I, you'll, you'll see I keep beating that horse, but that's a pretty, that's a pretty important one. So at this stage, economic development efforts should be focused on transforming the area and to look and feel like an entertainment area for the town. This isn't about calling restaurants and see who wants to be there yet because we don't have a story to tell them. We have a story of a sports park, but we also have the surrounding story of an industrial park. And we have to show how things are going to change and, and how this area is going to, we're going to make a dedication to this area to have it change. They're going to be the last ones to show up at the party as they are never the first. Expectation is that the retail guys come in first. You know, I, you've heard me say this and I joke about it, but they show up at the party when the keg's already tapped and the homecoming queen is already in the pool. I mean, these guys don't show up based on a good invitation. They show up once they actually see transformation starting to happen. They're going to need to see the impact of the sports complex, the actual visitor participation, transformation of the area away from its industrial roots before they really have the confidence to locate. Retail's super skittish right now. I don't care who you are, they're extremely skittish about how they make their decisions. They can't afford failures in any way. And they're not always confident in today's environment either about what we as consumers are going to respond to. So, anything that seems risky to them or feels too early is going to have them sit on the sidelines until there's something better established for them to respond to. Once the elements are in place, I really think that we should be comfortable developing entertainment, convenience, and restaurant retailing in this area. So, you know, all in all, I think that's the last slide, all in all, it's a super exciting opportunity, it's just not positioned right yet. And, you know, the, the location of the sports park, if it were up on a major intersection and it could help really anchor it, you could probably get away with less of that big-picture planning. But the fact that it's moved back into the industrial area and it, it doesn't connect out into what are normal retailing patterns, makes it much more necessary for us to be more aggressive in how we approach the area.
Any questions? Mr. Baker?
Thank you very much. How do you envision the connectivity between the two developments? Is there a?
They're literally going to be almost catty-corner from each other. So I think when we look at that, at that corridor study, we talked about ourselves about how we would create that, those connectivities. We talked about that a little bit with Great Western Industrial Park. That's a super important component. So when we look at, I think, what is that, North South Street, Diamond Valley?
Diamond Valley.
Diamond Valley Drive. We think that's probably the logical place for signalization. So how we treat that intersection would be one of the things we really want to look at in the corridor study, to make sure that it's comfortable for pedestrians crossing and people getting back and forth potentially between the two projects.
Do you see it mostly as pedestrian crossing? People, will they be driving between the two, do you think? Are they too far apart is what I'm?
I don't think so. I don't think they're too far apart. I mean, they're awfully close to each other. And, and I think that, I mean, that's, that's probably a natural connection, much more so than like trying to get them to downtown.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that as long as we've treated the intersection appropriately, understand we're going to have a lot of pedestrians, because as I understand it and from, and listening to Jeff and then reading about some of these sports complexes, you know, some of these people come in on big buses, they aren't necessarily accessible to cars, it's a really, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a pedestrian slash alternative to pedestrian type of environment, which we don't have out there right now in any capacity. And so, yes, those, those two properties, you know, because we sit like this, they really need to connect to each other in a strong manner, from a, especially a pedestrian perspective.
Other questions? Mr. Renner-Meyer and then Mayor Protonen.
I was going to ask you, did you sit down with GWIP?
Yep.
Are they open to this corridor plan and everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what kept going through my head is they kind of That's what kept going through my head, is they kind of had one plan, it seemed like, for a long time.
They have a really aggressive new plan that they presented to us, and, I mean, they're grasping, I mean, everything that's on that plan is everything we want. How's that? So, you know, as the dominoes fall out there, there's going to be a couple things. You know, there is some skepticism that we got from people about the sports park and how big is it really going to be and how deep is it and who else is coming with it and how many hotels, and, and so there is some question mark to how dynamic does it actually come to fruition. I think once you get past just the sports fields and you start to see some real infrastructure come into place, the guys who are banking on that from an investment perspective in terms of like Great Western, are going to start to get more serious about how they're, how they're going to develop their land and take advantage of it. If Great Western were, or if the sports complex were to go away or were to only be a few more, you know, athletic fields, Great Western's plan would change dramatically from what they presented to us. Their plan that they presented to us was, was based on a full functioning sports complex with a stadium and hotels and things like that. So, like I said, I mean, but we have to be prepared. I'll be really frank with you, we're not ready. I, I probably wasn't that blunt in this analysis, we're not ready to capitalize on the sports complex. You know, if Jeff's group really brings everything to fruition, we're still going to be sitting in the middle of an industrial area. So, you know, Scott's worked with a corridor plan, the connectivity planning, starting to really work with the DDA, these are all things that are really going to help bring a, a complete vision to the area and guide you in decision-making. If you're looking at a set of plans right now for Great Western Industrial Park and you haven't done this other exercise, you're not going to know whether you're, you're approving plans that are going to help neutralize or hinder, you know, the sports complex. And so, it's, it's a very different type of development than you would have in an established area. You're really taking a land use that's, you know, doesn't do landscaping, doesn't do sidewalks, doesn't do architectural enhancements, and you're trying to flip it to something that has high level of architectural, high level of connectivity and high level of exposure. So, you know, you couldn't be on more opposite sides of the spectrum of where you're, where you're at and what you're trying to get to. So, to me, there is some sense of urgency about getting going, so that we are making decisions in the town as, as Great Western comes in, and we know, hey, we want Eastman Park Drive to look like this, and we know this is the intersection profile, and these are the connective things that we need to have happen, so that we're making better decisions and we're not, you know, trying to fix it later on down the road.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, can-
Yeah, the conversation about transformation of industrial to more of an entertainment, retail, commercial, and the corridor plan, okay? I understand that, it's not like you're also suggesting that we would not follow our traditional development model. Traditionally, we, we might have a land use or a corridor plan, but the development pays the vast majority of development. So-
I, exactly.
Are you suggesting that we would reverse that, or the town would be more proactive in paying for things up front?
Yep. So like the north side, yeah, so like the north side of Eastman Park Drive, none of those landowners are going to step up and contribute. I mean, that's, that's not what their business model is, it doesn't, they don't necessarily benefit from us. If we really believe, and I do believe, and I think Scott, you're, you're in alignment with me, and I know Stacy, you are, if Eastman Park Drive has to become dynamic, we're going to have to look at what we do on the north side of Eastman Park Drive, so that we're complementing what perhaps Great Western does, and as well as, you know, how do we create those, those improvements along there? You've got to grab people's attention right at the intersection. So if it's a branding component and what that looks like, I mean, you know, that's not my area of expertise, I just know that that's, I gave you kind of some pictorial examples in the analysis. We've got to create that kind of streetscape, and so, you know, I, if I'm not incorrect, on the north side, we don't even have landscaping in a lot of places. We are more than likely going to have to make some level of investment to see this area start to transform. Now, what you do with that better be well-planned.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah. How long do you think Great Western is going to wait? At some point, they're going to want to develop their land regardless of the sports park.
Agreed.
Do they have any, do we have any idea how long they would wait for that?
You know, and I talked to Dean Brown about it, it's really when certain improvements in the sports complex actually come to fruition. So I think it's, it's a step beyond just the athletic fields, it's that next step. And when those things start to become visible, if I'm him, I'm on the street, I'm starting to figure it out. The timing for him to come in and get approvals for that, that may very well start once, you know, dirt starts to move and you start to see movement, you want to be in position. As much as I don't want them to be competitive, they will be to some degree. They're going to be making the same phone calls, trust me. Jeff's broker and, and Dean Brown's broker are going to be making the same phone calls and they're, he's got to have a project that looks good enough. And I will tell you what he presented to us was extremely attractive. If he proceeds under that, you know, that initiative that he started, he will, he will, he will be a, we will be very excited about that and it will be good for the Windsor marketplace.
But if the sports park doesn't develop as fast as he wants, at some point, he's going to like, I have to move on, right?
Yes. I mean, it, you know, I mean, I, if, if we're two years down the road and some of the things that we thought would happen with the sports park don't happen, I would fully expect Great Western to come in with a different type of plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, it's just as last-
Thank you, ma'am. I guess, question maybe not so much for you as for Scott or Shane, because we, you know, we just did that corridor plan down at Fairgrounds, and it was fairly robust in saying, here's our consistent approach to sidewalks, plantings, et cetera. If you're speaking of the same thing, in fact, a larger scale, I think, of a corridor plan, does the town get to sort of hire an architect and draw it out and say to everybody, here's what we like?
Yeah.
Or is this a group effort of, if G-Wip-
And part of it is an access control plan, right? I mean, that's-
Yeah, that's, some of the challenges that we've recognized with the site are, you know, the, the access points on the north side of Eastman Park Drive, a lot of those were established back in the 60s or 70s, and they don't line up with what Great Western or today's standards would require. So, the access control plan, getting those access points designed, you know, if they're limited movement accesses, getting all of those in place so that when site plans come in, there's no question about where the access is and what it looks like. But then in, in addition to that, I envision that corridor plan would include the entire right-of-way, so gaps in the pedestrian network where we've got some rural street cross-sections where there's sidewalk in front of Tolmar, but there's not sidewalk in front of where the old carousel used to be or to the bank. Making sure that we've got those sidewalk connections bridged, because that's something else that came out of the stakeholder meetings, that we've got existing stakeholders like Tolmar that have two buildings on either end of the corridor, and they have to get in their car to drive between the two, because there is no good sidewalk connection for their employees. So, those kind of things, in addition to the streetscape and landscaping.
But again, it's a process of developing that, something we get to do unilaterally, or is it something we really need to sit down with the property owners and say, here's, let's all, let's all develop a common vision?
So, what I neglected last Monday night, I didn't include in my CIP presentation, a proposal for a corridor plan. And as Katie indicated, I think Great Western is 100% on board with doing something to plan that corridor and getting the access points in, in place. And I think some of the corridor stakeholders on the north side, like Tolmar, would be glad to see it. I don't know that they'd want to participate if they're already in, but, yeah, it would be something that we would probably include in a CIP request and do that corridor plan.
So, Mr. Sislowski, if you don't mind, in part, the question I had was, even though, I mean, I know the focus is going to be on Eastman, but 257 is the major connector in front. So have there been conversations with CDOT, who's going to be an integral player in all of this, and they're going to have very specific things of what can and maybe can't be done? And, and I know, in talking to their previous regional director, they want to know sooner rather than later if anything major is coming into an area where they have any roadways, even in the near vicinity.
Yeah, I know that Engineering and, and Great Western Industrial Park have both talked to CDOT preliminarily, and those conversations are ongoing. And I know that we've also kept Omar and Engineering in the loop as these conversations are going on, so that his plans, that he's working on for the intersection of Eastman Park Drive and Highway 257, don't preclude any of those streetscape or pedestrian connectivity. So, there are multiple conversations going on, but we are keeping everyone-
But they're aware that this massive potential project could be coming, correct?
That-
Is that, I mean, they, they should be made aware of that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I don't know if there have been any direct conversations with the, with CDOT regarding the sports park at this point in time.
I, I feel like they've been mostly ad hoc.
Yeah.
And I think part of that, Mayor, is just with the transition of the regional director, and there's been some jostling at CDOT, so it, yeah, I don't think it's been a real formal, but I know that there have been a lot of informal conversations about it.
We probably should nail that down at this, I mean, I mean, I'm hearing that there's kind of an urgency sooner rather than later with them, because they like to think, know about that in terms of, you know, the long-term plan. There's also been numerous conversations right now about this O Street connection, and you've got a whole bunch of folks, you know, in Greeley and other places that, not, you know, not that this necessarily, but it is kind of adjacent to all of that, what's happening there as well. So I think all of those conversations and all of those folks who are having that conversation need to be in this conversation as well, because it's all happening within that mix.
It, it was kind of, when we had our report from CDOT a few weeks ago on the 392, 257, you asked a question about the sports park, and it didn't appear that they knew a great deal about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That was very disconcerting.
Yeah, I, I just, the fact that we had received concept, a recent concept from the sports park, we really didn't have any information to share with them at this point, but they will definitely be included in that referral process sooner. We, we're, I believe we may have just gotten some of the drawings for the initial multi-use fields just today, so those are the first formal drawings that we've received, so.
Any additional questions? Okay. Mr. Lord, did you have anything further you wanted to add, or? Was that kind of-
Sorry, no, we're just sitting down. So, no, nothing further at this time, but we'll continue to work on this project as we advance through the other identified areas throughout town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item D, communications, communications from our town attorney.
In real time, I have an update for Dr. Jones on his residency question for the Planning Commission. I went through the, the code, couldn't find it, started scratching my head. It's statutory. It's in 3123203-sub-two, where it says, "All members of Planning Commission shall be bona fide residents of the municipality, and if any member ceases to reside in the municipality, membership on the commission shall automatically terminate." So, it's in the statute, it's, so-
So we don't have to say it?
Right.
What about Board of Adjust, Board of Adjustment, that's not in the statute?
Board of Adjustment is statutory, I didn't look at that, but I will. I'll get an answer to all of you on that before the 14th of October. I just wanted to let you know that. That's, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Thanks, Shane.
Any communications from town staff? We do also have in the packet, the Windsor Police Department, August 2019, statistical report, so happy to see there were several items where we had actually gone down.
What did you go now?
From 2019 to 2018, there are some things that have increased, but there were some fairly good number of those that we're also seeing on the decline. So hopefully that's to, kudos to our police force, hopefully that, you know, we're being very proactive and that's due to that.
Mayor?
Yes.
One question. Chief, total traffic warnings went from 320 in last year to 77 this year.
I have a great explanation for that, that makes sense.
You just write them up?
Yeah, they don't warn anybody anymore.
It concerned me too when I first saw that, then I realized that we have actually ceased to write written warnings, they're just verbal warnings, they hand out cards to the, after they do the clearance, go through the process. So, it's tracked, it's put in the system, but we're not doing the old version, paper version. So it's, it's not static as it used to be.
I guess the other one that bumped up, because there is a slight bump in some elements of crime generally, but the vehicle trespass went down by 100%, anyway. Was the ask here an aberration, or?
It, it tends, that's a cyclical crime, where it tends to happen a lot of times under new construction areas, or you're getting hit by, it basically rings. We've, last year, we had a time period where we were involved in a number of crimes that were groups that were working up and down the front range. We've had a couple of those this year, but not, not nearly to the same extent. In fact, as I think I reported in one of my updates, that we had actually, through some diligent work by patrol officers, Officer Schumar for one, tracked down suspects in Loveland that committed crimes here in town and actually committed, or executed warrants in Denver and recovered a lot of stolen merchandise, and actually had people arrested in those cases. In another case, a, Fort Collins was, had a tracker on a suspect, they called over and asked about why this person may be in this area. Actually, we had two trespasses in that area, and they were able to link him to one of those and to several others from prior month, so.
I was also hoping that maybe some of that was due to maybe just some information that we're getting out there, like, you know, to warn folks and to remind folks to keep your cars locked and all of that, so.
That is, we hope that too, but the only way we can show that is maybe over a longer period of time. Again, like these trespasses tend to go up and down throughout the year, and sometimes we'll have a long period of time we have none, and all of a sudden, we'll have huge increases. Or when those increases occur, they are because there is a, a group specific that are targeting an area. I spoke with a developer not long ago in Berthoud, who was having lots of construction theft at his site, so we've stepped up some of our patrol in our construction areas as a result of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Communications from town manager.
Yes, Your Honor, a few things. One is, as a reminder, we have the joint board meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, September 25th, from 5:30 to 8:00, at the Severance Town Hall. So look forward to seeing those of you that can make it there. I wanted to let the board know that we're, we're planning on doing our raw water dedication presentation at the port on October 14th, so that'll be with recommendations from staff on lowering our water dedication requirements. So that's coming up at your next meeting. We have, we've done two polls now for our special CIP workshop to have the, the next meeting with the board. Unfortunately, in both tries, the most that we can have in attendance are five of you, and so that would be, October 8th would be the chance to have five of you, or we could shoot out dates later in that month, so it's really the board's call. I mean, I was trying, I was hoping to get at least six, I thought maybe we couldn't get all seven. Five isn't as many as I would like or probably that you would like, but that's just the majority, that's the most we've had. So far, is two polls and the most we can get is five people.
So what's the date?
It's October 8th, it's a Tuesday, so.
So you are sched, I'm sorry, you are scheduling that?
No, I, I'm not. I, I want to give it to the board, because I, I hate to pick. There are two of you, I believe it was Mr. Baker and Mr. Wilson, that were not available that night, and I hate to cut out our Laramo County folks, but, I mean, that, that's the, we had one other date, this next Monday, also, I'm going to have five of you, there's a different five that can make it. But at this point, I would feel hesitant to think that we could actually have that packet ready for, for prime time. So, I, I would give it to the board and say, if you'd like, I could do a third polling and look deeper, but I know the mayor, you wanted to have it sooner than later, you wanted to have the conversation versus having it and letting it sit for six weeks and then hearing it again and forgetting everything. So, I would just say that's board's prerogative on if you want to go with the 8th, or if you'd like, I could send out a, a third set of polling tomorrow.
There's two days that had five people in them.
There were, the, the other one was on this next Monday, it's like the, the fifth Monday of the month.
Right.
I was just saying, at this point, I'm, I'd be a little bit- I was just saying, at this point, I'm, I'd be a little bit concerned, getting the staff tomorrow and saying, okay, we're pushing a packet out, I don't know that we're actually ready to go on that date. So, that, that's the only issue with that.
How about a Monday work session?
Right, tho, those are the, the other dates that we had sent out, and we just didn't have a lot of takers. I was trying to see if we could start at maybe four, 4:30 on a regularly scheduled work session, and there were on those three or four people.
That would be the seventh and fourteenth.
Was that the only one on the eighth?
Me?
Yeah, that, that, that was the, the only one, well, that was on this most recent poll where we could get five. So, I would just ask the board, I mean, would you like me to send out a third round of polling? I'm happy to do it.
I don't know that it's gonna change calendars for anybody necessarily.
Right.
It won't change my calendar by doing that.
Okay, well, yeah, the only way I could do, Mayor, would just be to look for a later week, you know, pu, push it out a little bit further, but I think that gets a little bit obviously further away from our last meeting.
I'd like Mr. Baker and Mr. Wilson to submit their thoughts about some of it. I mean, I care about their input on it, but maybe they could submit that to the mayor, to you, you know, ahead of time, so that then we could, you know, get that input at the meeting if we are going for the eighth, and neither one of them come to town. I don't wanna exclude their thoughts of what I'm getting at, I do care about what they...
That could be like at 6:30, but I don't think Miles could. I don't remember what time you're looking to start, like at five or something like that?
I thought it was like five...
Well, i, if it's, if it's on the eighth, that's a Tuesday, so it could be 5:36.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the, the other dates, if we're gonna do before work session, that needs to be really early. But if it's on a Tuesday, we're not necessarily beholden, I'd probably be, I think...
Are you just gone, Miles?
My son has a concert for school, band concert.
What time is that?
Seven.
So, if we started at, at like 5:30, I mean, you have like an hour there, would that be...
Yeah, I mean, whatever, I'll do what I can.
Okay, I mean, so we could kind of, if, if maybe you could catch part of that...
This is just gonna be us, so we won't be hearing from all the departments, it's just, so, and if we let you go first, maybe, with your, you know, then we could give you first opportunity, knowing that you might leave.
I'd be there for the second half. Yeah, do that.
Okay, it looks like October 8th, and we'll...
And then you could come at six, so you'd miss a little bit, but then you could come and...
I'd probably get there right around, between six, 6:30.
Well, it'll be over by probably 6:15. We start at 5:30.
Yeah.
I bet.
Great.
Okay, so we'll, I'll send out that reminder, but we'll go for October 8th. I appreciate, yeah, it's just, your guys' schedules are pretty...
October 8th or what?
I, I think 5:30. We'll start at 5:30. We'll try to get Mr. Baker, for the first part, hear any questions he has, and then he'll be able to go to the son's concert. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, and the final thing, I received a note, so we're not live-streaming this meeting tonight, we're having an issue with YouTube. It is on Channel Eight, but we couldn't get it to livestream, so we'll, staff will work on that issue tomorrow and upload the meeting, but if you hear from any of your constituents, it just, there's an issue on that end, so that's everything.
Okay. Communications from town board.
Mayor, just, just one quick comment, I wanna thank Stacy for putting together that retail study. I think she and Katie did a wonderful job, it was good to make us focus on what could be a very, very important piece, a piece of development for the town, as well done. Thank you.
Well, thanks, it was actually a lot ever from planning and engineering too, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks, Scott.
Anybody else? I, I have two items I wanna mention. One is, as you all know, Windsor was host to the Cattle Barons Ball last Saturday night. I don't, I think the last time we, Windsor was the host was like fifteen years ago or something, and I am happy and proud to say that it was one of the, the largest events. They raised $1 million in that evening. So, it was truly an exceptional evening, all going to a very good cause, the American Cancer Society. So, I'm very proud of that happening right here in our backyard, and I think it's like the, in the top three largest campaign efforts across the United States for that event to take place, so, I mean, and with this number, it might boost us to number one, so, yeah, so everybody came out and really supported the event, and it was, it was a good time, and it was, all went to a very good cause. Also wanna remind everybody, this Thursday, dessert and dish with the mayor, Sat, Thursday, September 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Fireside Room at Pelican Lake, so hope to see those of you there who don't want to get up on a Saturday morning and join me from 7:30 to 9:00. We also have had lots and lots of compliments on the emergency preparedness, mayor, that coffee that we had last Saturday, folks really liked the information, some folks are asking how they can continue to get this information, so, Wild County, our folks from Wild County and Laramo County did a great job being there. We had over thirty people who participated, and a lot of them, two were brand-new folks, they just moved to the community, lots of new folks, so it was a really good event, and I hope Thursday night will stir some more good conversation. So, with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion on the floor from Mr. Renemeier with a second from Mr. Sizlowski, to adjourn this evening, all in favor vote yes, opposed no. And we are adjourned.
Who were the two guys sitting in the back? Did you split this?
Stacy, go. Stacy, stand to chat.